We're back. I know already. I got a busy week this week. I already got back from a meeting and grocery shopping. I have a meeting every single day this week, except for Friday. For now. TBD. I don't know. But I wanted to go through the Public Safety Committee meeting, but I want to do a little bit differently because a lot of these budget meetings are super boring. They're two and a half, three hours. Today's meeting was like an hour and a half, two hours. And it's just filled with nonsense. So I'm gonna just, we're gonna watch the IMPD uh budget meeting. Because Rick Snyder, who is the Fraternal Order of Police President, and by the way, uh, Rick, you still haven't replied to my email. I want to know how the endorsement thing works. Do you already have your endorsement of Justin Moed? Are you going to endorse the guy that wanted to get pooped on by Sydney Leather? What is going on here? So, you know, if he does endorse Justin, just know that Rick Snyder is not a serious person. He doesn't give a shit at all. But guess we'll wait and see. But first, I want to talk about this shit. So this dipshit Jesse Commie Clown Brown was talking about Trump today. And then he posts this, "I don't think an assassination is ever morally acceptable." Same with storming the Capitol. Same with setting up a gibbet and trying to hang Mike Pence. But when your boy tells his brown shirts to stand back and stand by, proud of your boy, and then uses them to attack Congress, let's get real here. First off, did Trump ever tell people to storm the Capitol? No. How many feds were there? How many undercover cops were there? The same with setting up a given trying to hang Mike Pence. Total dope response. Jesse is a mask clown. So this got, this went a little bit viral. Uh, I saw Tony Kinnit, he had posted it at that, the TikTok caught wind of it. Uh, so I just want to go through the comments, that's all. I mean, he wrote this whole long thing about it and he is an absolute dope. He goes through this whole long thread, but like I said, the comments are amazing. And you know, obviously he is pro Hamas. He's uh, which if you don't remember, Hamas likes to throw gay people off off the roofs of apartments. So he is pro that. But the comments on here. Oh, man, this is awesome. Does he have a permit for those gums? Dude is all gums, no teeth. Yikes. Oh, shit. I mean, this one, Neil, it's Trump's fault. We keep trying to kill him. Yep, there it is. Gotta like that. I've been liking a lot of these, just trying to get the algorithm going. Yeah, everything. Look at his mouth. Are you surprised? All the ugly people hate Trump. It's so true. It's so true. Oh, man. But anyway, so. Oh, look, they actually replied. Oh, nice. Oh, well done. Well done. Who, uh, sixteen point eight thousand. All right, well done. This is how you get, oh, that means. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. This is awesome. I'm liking all of these in real time right now. So this council had a meeting today and they just loaded up with like forty-five, forty-six uh replies on here. All the same thing. I got a feeling that Jesse is gonna be getting a phone call. Oh, yeah. I'm liking all of these. Fire Jesse Brown. Yeah, you know, I would be surprised if he makes it past the primary. I mean, this, we'll see what happens after the election. Because right now Jesse's a useful idiot. That's why he's gonna get his, his commie folks, the Eastside Socialists that tried to close down a pizza joint along with Blake Johnson and uh other boomers that play with Legos. They all try to get it closed down because they're a bunch of fools. Because they didn't agree with him. But this is uh, this is pretty awesome. I'm actually loving this right now. We're doing this, we're doing this in real time right now. So anyway, but we gotta go back. I'm already almost five minutes in, so. Let's get out of there. We'll get over here uh right there. And let's just get into this.
Chief, welcome.
There we go. Are you ready, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Counselors. Good evening. Before uh we begin our presentation, I do, I do also want to acknowledge that today is September eleventh, a solemn day of reflection for our nation as a day to honor and remember the first responders and everyday Americans who ran toward danger twenty-three years ago in New York, Washington DC, and in Pennsylvania. We honor their lives and legacies uh as they made the ultimate sacrifice. Back here at home, I want to recognize the brave men and women of the IMPD who every day put themselves in harm's way to protect our community. Their courage and selflessness reflect the very best of what it means to serve. I am constantly amazed by the stories of heroism and selflessness I hear almost daily. These are accounts of officers and professional staff who quietly perform their duties without seeking recognition simply because they are dedicated to their work. However, we must confront recent events within our own department that have deeply disappointed not only our agency but our city as a whole. I am personally upset and disturbed by these incidents. Such behavior is completely unacceptable and goes against everything IMPD stands for. Our officers are tasked with serving and protecting
For those who don't know, this year, I think there have been three of them. There was one in January, IMPD officer charged on alleged relations with a minor. IMPD officer arrested on child exploitation. And then the most recent one, uh booked, he was booked, he is an IMPD officer but got booked up in Hendricks County. Uh preliminary charges of child molestation and public voyeur. But you know what? Here's the deal. I mean, some of these people have been in there for a while. I have to, I'll double check while he's talking, but this is only gonna get worse. I'm telling you right now, because when you don't have like good people wanting to be a, a police officer, what do you think you're gonna get? You're gonna get bottom of the barrel kind of people. And let's not forget, like this other dude, his name is Kamal Bola. He's Indian. Thirty-five, that's the child molester alleged. Uh, you gotta remember about cultures too. Some of these people come from different cultures and raping little boys or women is normal for them. So I, I hate that to, to tell you, but this whole thing is gonna get worse before it gets better. And you can blame Joe Hogshead, you can blame Ryan Mears, you can blame the courts. I don't trust Chris Bailey either. He's good friends with Ryan Mears. They're all part of the same jerk off circle.
seeing all members of our community, including our most vulnerable. The nature of these recent allegations is especially troubling. And because of this, I took immediate action against the accused officers. I want to be clear, our department remains fully committed to upholding the highest standards of conduct. This is what IMPD has always stood for and what we will continue to stand for. We must remain vigilant and ensure that any behavior contrary to our values is identified swiftly and addressed appropriately. Accountability is key to maintaining public trust and we will not waver in our commitment to that principle. As we discuss the 2025 budget today, it is crucial to understand that we are only seeking the resources necessary to, to continue serving and protecting our community to those high standards. Because that is what our community and our officers expect and deserve. We are also committed to investing in the values and culture that make this department one every resident can trust and be proud of. So where do we stand right now? Indianapolis continues to see declines in crime. Preliminary numbers show overall crime down twenty-four percent over 2023. And murders, non-fatal shootings, and robberies continue their year-over-year declines, but I acknowledge today that there is still more work to be done.
Um, now, show me 2019 numbers because he's going off of the peak, which was like 2020, 2021. And he's saying, well, you know what, year after year, which, you know, when we peaked in 2020 or 21, um, they were really bad. But look, we're getting better. But we are nowhere close to the, to the 2019 numbers. And it is funny, right? To see in 2024, this lady, let me check over here, so you can see it. Yeah. Oh, no, you can't see it. This lady, wearing a mask and not even properly. God, we live in such a clown world.
Agency can fight crime alone. It takes all of us to create safe communities. We must recognize and grieve alongside our community for the lives lost. Every life lost in our city should prompt us to pause, reflect, and ask ourselves, what can I contribute to a safe city? We've also seen far too many lives lost this year due to reckless driving, speeding, and other traffic-related incidents. IMPD is committed to traffic enforcement efforts given our current staffing levels and resources. This includes focusing on high-traffic areas, school zones, parks, locations with high numbers of traffic complaints, and high-crash areas.
As far as I know, they have had the, the stand-down order from Hogshead or Chief Bailey over here to really discretionary. You can pull him over if you want to, or you don't have to.
It's also
Also, what does it matter? They're just gonna get a slap on the wrist. I mean, how many times, if you go back to my Fatal Crash Review video, there are plenty of people that have had double digits, a baker's dozen amount of times of getting a ticket and nothing happened. If you really want to fix this whole thing, you need to take away their freaking license.
so important to note, the critical role the community play and we play as individuals in traffic safety. Our community can support our efforts by being responsible and attentive on our roadways. Distracted driving can have tragic consequences, and we've seen this far too often.
Hey, you know there is a cellphone law, but nobody ever gets pulled over for it. Just go down Rockville Road. That's, that's all you have to do. You'll, you'll be able to put out so many tickets that you could fund the entire IMPD with it.
Another significant challenge involves mental health. That is why several years ago IMPD in partnership with I E E M S and Eskenazi created the Mobile Crisis Assistance Team. We continue to train our officers to recognize and manage mental health crisis. The IMPD fully supports MCAT and the recently launched condition-led response teams. Law enforcement should be the last resort in mental health issues, not the first. We support all efforts to minimize the need for law enforcement intervention in these incidents. However, since 2022, our officers have successfully taken almost ten thousand five hundred people under emergency detention. Successfully to emergency rooms for help. Almost ten thousand five hundred individuals who meet the state statute uh definition of having a crisis, where we can physically take them into custody. Ten thousand five hundred times since 2022.
Ten thousand five hundred times where we have some guy who's freaking out, probably some drug addict who's going full schizo mode, who has no job, but guess who has to pay the hospital bill? The taxpayers. That ain't going out for free. Your township or either city is paying for it. But while they're all abusing drugs and freaking out, uh, they're wasting your taxpayer money. Not only IMPD, but also the hospitals.
I'm proud of the efforts of our officers and their dedication to making sure people in crisis go for help and not jail. They don't get the credit they deserve for successfully navigating this sometimes impossible task. And we encourage our community to use resources available to them by calling nine eight eight instead of nine one one when you know yourself isn't, you are in crisis or someone you know is in crisis or suicidal. Our department remains committed to training in mental health awareness, implicit bias, de-escalation, and using only the force when, that's necessary and constitutional. We are continuously learning from our experiences and seeking ways to improve. To provide the best service, we need dedicated and compassionate officers who reflect the community we serve. Ensuring our budget supports seventeen hundred and forty-three officers sends a clear message that Indianapolis values and understands the importance of public safety. We applaud Mayor Hogshead and his commitment to our people and making them the focus of this year's budget. That is why discretionary budget requests were minimal from IMPD this year. Our recruiting unit is actively engaging with potential recruits locally and out of state through career fairs, universities, community events, and exciting new partnerships such as with the Indianapolis Colts and Interview Now, a communications platform that will allow us ongoing engagement with potential recruits. We aim to reflect our community's diversity in our department and enhance safety for all. We are also hiring additional professional staff, employees. They are critical to our operational success. In 2025, we are proposing adding seven new positions that include digital forensic analysts and public records specialists to improve our department's efficiency and transparency.
Being very conservative with our budget, but we're also adding seven new positions, including a raise for everybody, cola, health insurance. But don't you worry, we're gonna find out how much of the extra is
Tonight's budget proposal represents an increase from 2024 and continues to build on the investments in training, equipment, benefits, and transparency like body worn camera and in-car cameras. It also prioritizes officer wellness, a crucial but often overlooked aspect of our officers' work. Our officers experience trauma that few can understand, and it is our responsibility to support them to prevent tragic outcomes. In 2023, at least one hundred and sixty-three officers across the United States committed suicide. And more and more officers are leaving our profession because of PTSD. And still many others suffer in silence. We must address these issues and take care of those who take care of us. Some of the cost increases in our budget are unavoidable, such as costs of living increases, insurance expenses, chargebacks to agencies like ISA and Building Authority for rent. But I am committed to using our dollars in the most efficient and effective way to meet our mission. You all have been instrumental in equipping our officers with essential technology. And this year's budget includes costs for maintaining that equipment and service plans to ensure smooth operations. As ARPA funding is ending, we must ensure we maintain technology that has helped drive down murder for three years in a row. As we discuss the budget, understand that we are only seeking the necessary
By the way, it's only September. We still have like three months left. We don't know how many murders there are gonna be. There's like half a dozen street takeovers done over the weekend. Um, everybody's back in school, so now they're gonna be having some beef, bro, you know?
resources and to continue protecting our community to the highest standards. Our residents and staff deserve nothing less, and I truly believe Indianapolis is moving in the right direction.
It's not.
We are seeing reductions in violent crime and using technology to make us smarter and more effective.
Yeah.
The 2024, but 2025 budget proposal will help us continue this progress and enable IMPD, IMPD to better serve our community and its residents. With your support, we will build a safer, stronger Indianapolis together. Thank you for your time and partnership and your dedication to the safety of our city. I will now uh turn it over to uh our CFO. Oh no, I have a couple more slides. Sorry, we practiced this this morning too. So about our department, IMPD is the best trained and prepared police department in the state of Indiana, if not the Midwest. We provide service for over four hundred square miles, almost one million people, and millions of more visitors each and every year in our city. We are currently staffed with fourteen hundred and sixty-four officers and over two hundred professional staff employees. We have two Assistant Chiefs who divide responsibilities among five divisions. And with me today is Assistant Chief Catherine Cummings, Assistant Chief Michael Wally, Deputy Chief of Administration Valerie Cunningham, Deputy Chief of the Investigations Division Kendall Adams, Deputy Chief of the Operations Division Tanya Terry, Deputy Chief of the Professional Standards Division, Richard Riddle, uh Deputy Chief and Director of PSC Kevin Weddington, Commander Jeff Silcox of our Training Bureau, and Chief Communications Officer Alexa Bolan. As I said, we're divided into Operations Division, Investigations Division, Operations being the most heavy. Most of the, the women and men who wear the blue suits are in that division. Uh Special Operations, Tactical Units. Uh The Investigations Division has all of our investigative units, homicide, aggravated assaults, Special Victims Unit. The Administration Division is responsible for our purchasing and budget, uh as well as our Training Bureau. Uh Technology and Professional Standards are two divisions that which I created when I was, when I took over as chief. The Technology Division is one that is, is growing and we're trying to develop as we move forward. Right now, Deputy Chief Weddington is helping oversee that as well as his duties at Public Safety Communication, and we appreciate his, his work there. And then Professional Standards reports directly to me. That is Internal Affairs, Investigations, Policies, and helps manage our civilian boards. Uh In our next slide, uh you'll see our staffing numbers going back to two thousand and seven. Currently, we have the lowest number of sworn officers we've had in the history of IMPD.
That's fascinating. We have people retiring. It's like social security have, or the reverse, I guess. You have a lot of people retiring or moving out and not enough people going in.
We currently sit at fourteen hundred and sixty-four officers. We just recently started our second recruit class of the year with, I believe, twenty-seven recruits. And we will start a third recruit class this year in December, and our plan is to have three more uh in the following year. Uh On the next slide, I'll talk briefly about some of our successes. Crime reduction continue, crime continues to go down in our city. Eight percent reduction in criminal homicides, ten percent in non-fatal shooting victims, fourteen percent in non-fatal shooting incidents, eighteen percent in robbery. Uh And I will just mention that over the last three years, business robberies have dropped almost fifty percent in our city. I give direct credit to Deputy Chief Adams and the covert robbery unit who focuses on serial robber, robbers. Because it's not just your first time, usually you've done more. And because of technology that you provided us, we've been able to, to, to put these groups down, get them charged, and with help from the federal government, also charge them with Hobbes violations. So that is a direct uh result of, of their efforts and an overall crime reduction of twenty-four percent to where we're at.
That's because we were peaking in 2020 and 2021. Of course, you guys are high-fiving each other on this whole thing. Just a big hug box.
Briefly some of the highlights, thanks to uh budget that you provide
Give me a date. Give me a date on here. According to what? And when it pertains, what are we, what are we looking here?
At us, we are in the process of, of looking for a vendor with OFM to build our first purpose-built, city-owned police uh district headquarters since nineteen ninety-two, I believe. North District will be that. Uh Somewhere on North District, we don't have a location yet. And we're currently undergoing renovations in the east wing of our police headquarters uh to bring that out of the nineteen sixties and in at least to the nineteen eighties. Uh But I appreciate the efforts and money that you are providing of that. Uh Our in-car cameras are being installed in our police cars as we speak. And we're operating a real-time crime center like we've never had in this city before with professional staff analysts and, and a few sworn officers who are using our cameras, our license plate readers, and other technology to provide our officers and detectives in the field with real-time information to help them do their job. Uh And now, um, oh, before I go, I want to talk about our, our pictures here of Gus and Ally, our two wellness dogs. Um And we're adding a third dog to our victim assistance unit, which will go out to scenes and be, be available to victims and our officers on actual scenes. Uh They, they have been uh game changers for us. I actually now have a huge picture of Gus in my office, and just looking at Gus provides me some mental health uh relief. So, uh and you can, you can find Ally roaming the halls on the second floor daily looking for snacks. And Gus is at the training academy where he'll be happy to sit in your lap. Uh And with that, I will turn it over to our CFO to talk about specific budget numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Chairman. Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and Counselors. First and foremost, I want to share with you that I do have a bit of a cold, so uh please excuse me for any sudden coughs or frogs in the throat.
No one cares. No one gives a shit.
Uh We'll begin um by observing our total breakdown. Um By fund, the biggest difference you see here on this slide is the difference from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
Hold on, I'm in the way.
It's a thirteen point nine million dollar increase for a total introduced amount of three hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. In the forthcoming slides, we'll dive, dive a little deeper on the specifics, making up these amounts. Here's our breakdown uh by character. IMPD has five total characters. The top section breaks it down by each individual amount, and the bottom graph is a visual representation of how much the overall budget is in each character. And as you can see, the significance, character one roughly makes up eighty percent of our total budget. And this leaves little discretionary funding in our other characters for operational expenditures. Beginning with character one, character one consists of our personnel salaries, fringe benefits, and pension. And please note the total increase of eight point one million makes up fifty-nine percent of the total thirteen point nine million dollar variance from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. And this increase primarily consists of fully funding seventeen forty-three officers, sworn officers, the annual cost of living adjustments, health insurance increases, and the additional seven new professional staff positions to aid our new technology division. Character two represents our expenses toward goods and supplies. And over the last year, we've identified some goods and supplies expense that are now characterized as character four.
Oh, that's why.
We've been working closely with the Office of Finance and Management. And having character two reduced by four hundred thousand dollars to shift or reclassify the funding puts IMPD in a better position to opt, to optimize and maximize our budgetary allocations. For character three, this represents our services, contractual obligations, including training development and travel expense. There's an overall four point two million increase from twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, which makes up thirty percent of the total requested budget increase. And thanks to ARPA funding, IMPD has been able to implement certain initiatives. And this amount allows us to cover those continued costs for services and maintenance from our general fund.
Hey, thanks to more taxpayer money, we can spend more of your money. Yay.
The char, this character also includes our chargebacks from our ISA and building authority county agencies. The breakdown for character four consists of our capital outlay expense. The ten point six million dollar amount for twenty twenty-five only represents three point one five percent of our entire introduced budget.
What the fuck are they spending money on a Faraday cage for? Is for like technology or something? Ish.
The increase of one point eight million, which considers that character two four hundred thousand dollar reduction reallocation, allows IMPD to proceed with the investments in modern equipment, technology, and overall infrastructure improvements, primarily in the city cumulative fund for fleet and vehicle expense and financing. Lastly, for character five, these are our internal chargebacks from the city. The breakdown reflects two variances in central services and fleet services for an overall increase of one hundred thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars, which is primarily due to the overall increase of the Office of Corporation Counsel Legal Services. And at this time, I'm going to allow Chief Bailey to discuss our budgeting for equity slides for the presentation.
Even before uh DEI or uh some of those topics were, were, were big in our community, IMPD was leading the way even before the, the enterprise itself had its own. Uh And currently, our, our processes the way even before the enterprise itself had its own. And currently, our process is led by Captain John Walton, who ensures that our officers and our professional staff employees have a voice, both in policy and operational recommendations within our agency. This group gets together once a month. It's a diverse group of individuals who offers ideas to the command staff to ensure that people across our agency are treated fairly. We also had DEI training for officers last year, and we'll continue that into this year. Some of the other successes are our Body One Camera Program and our newly implemented in-car camera program, which allows for us to have some transparency and show the community what our officers are faced with every day, which is a positive benefit of what we've seen from both of these tools, and also allows us to be accountable to the community when we fall out of line.
The IMPD videos are very amusing. You should go watch them. They're on YouTube.
For population, IMPD has the most, that I know of, civilian oversight of any major city in the United States. We have a fully civilianized merit board, a citizen complaint board, a use-of-force board that's civilian majority, a general orders board that's majority civilian. And so our community has a voice in the operations and accountability of our police department, and we're proud of that, that we can lead the way in making sure that our community has a voice.
Got this blocked off right now, man.
Also, our violence reduction efforts continue. It's our number-one priority. On the screen there, you'll see that our non-fatal shooting numbers are down, but also I talked about our murder numbers.
There we go.
Unfortunately, these particular crimes disproportionately impact neighborhoods and persons of color.
Why do you think that is, huh? Why do you think that is? This is very interesting. Let's see. Non-fatal shooting assault victim demographics. Hmm, two-hundred-ninety-eight blacks to ninety-six whites. Hmm, very interesting ethnicity, non-Hispanic, three forty-seven. Whatever. Why do you think that is, huh? I think everybody should have to watch the Chris Rock video of what not to do when you get pulled over by the police.
Anywhere between seventy-five and eighty percent of both our suspects and victims in homicides and in non-fatal shootings are African-American, and so it is incumbent upon us to work with those communities and work in those communities to ensure that there's safety for all the people that live there. We are committed to diversity in our agency. I mentioned our Diversity Equity Inclusion Project, but I also want to tell you that we invest in organizations like Noble, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, and NOLI, the National Association of Women Law Enforcement Executives. Why is that important? It's important for our people to have an opportunity to interact with people in leadership positions around the country. It allows them to bring perspectives back to our agency and perspectives from our agency to other places around the country, where I believe Indianapolis is leading the way. We allow for people, different people around our agency every year, to have an opportunity to attend these events, and we're proud of those efforts. When I was appointed chief in February, I assembled the most diverse command staff in the history of IMPD, and we continue that commitment today. I remain committed to a leadership team, both at the appointed level and in our merit ranks that reflect our community. We still have a long way to go. I'm not, no planting a flag of victory here, but we are making progress in that area, and I'm proud of the work that has been done by the people behind me, and people that have been in this agency, that have retired, people like Ida Williams, who, in her mentorship of officers at every rank, helped build that need and that desire to be in leadership positions in our department. I'll tell you why it's more difficult for people in leadership positions, sergeant, lieutenant, and captain. Our pension, no matter what rank you obtain, is based on your third-year patrol officer. So there's not a whole lot of incentive to become a sergeant, lieutenant, or captain, and so you have to want to do it and have that desire to be part of the leadership and the change in an organization. And it takes people like Valerie Cunningham and Catherine Cummings and Ida Williams and Mike Wally and Ken Del Adam, who have reached down to the people behind them, lifted them up, and let them know that they are needed in these positions, and we have to have a diverse group of individuals. While we're doing better in certain racial demographics, we are still not where we need to be in recruiting and retaining women in our police department. We are part of the Thirty by Thirty Initiative, which is a nationwide initiative to have thirty percent of your recruit classes and thirty percent of your agency women by Thirty Thirty. We still endeavor to do that, and with the help of the women to the right of me and behind me, we're going to continue to move in that direction.
This guy is such a fucking cuck. Holy shit. I remember when police chiefs were badass motherfuckers. And then what is this guy saying? We don't have enough women in the force. Hey, we gotta really focus on that. Let's not worry about the crime. We gotta make sure our affirmative action numbers are where there's to be. Bring more women. Bring more women. Not solve crimes. What the fuck?
Some of the barriers that we see, as you heard from Chief Malone on just the XBEs, is most of the purchases we make are large purchases, like technology, that come from multinational organizations. However, like IFD, we're working every single day to look for ways that we can parcel off parts of contracts. Maybe it's pieces to build our police cars, things like that, that we can improve in our XBE use. And also looking at our current contracts as they come up, is it appropriate to rebid those to try to find vendors that may represent our community a little bit better?
How many resources are you putting out there just so you can get your affirmative action vendors where they're supposed to be? Motherfucker, just get the shit fixed. That's all that matters at the end of the day. This whole thing is wasting so much time on trying to find something just to get your equity numbers going. This city deserves better leadership. IMPD deserves a better leader. The whole Indianapolis administration is shit. It's garbage. Get rid of all of them. I should just become mayor. This city will be fixed within two to three years with my leadership.
We are currently actively recruiting officers and professional staff employees, and we can take all the help we can get. If you can help us, we would appreciate that by spreading the word. Our starting pay is one of the highest in the Midwest, and for those listening online, join IMPD.ind.gov. Join IMPD.ind.gov. We'll soon be launching a new website, as I talked about with Interview Now, and showcasing why Indy and why IMPD, but also partnership with Indianapolis Colts. If you've been to a Colts game and looked at the Scout Magazine, you'll see that we have some information in that magazine. Obviously, community engagement is an important tool and one of the highest priorities that we have, because we know when we have a community that's in lockstep with the police, the community is safer, our officers are safer. We have more legitimacy, and we're able to solve and prevent crime better. Our community engagement continues to do great work. They are a small section, but mighty. They have done extraordinary job, engagement both with our youth, from sports to camps to the classroom, and there's some exciting things on the horizon with this team, and we're looking forward to another successful year. Some of the stats, some kids that they engage through sports and other things are on your screen there. I won't read you those. And with that, I will end my presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you and your team back there. Comments and questions, Counsel Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
How are you?
I am well, sir.
So Carlos Perkins is wanting to put out a proposal that would allow the cops to be fired for allegedly doing something or not doing something, which tells me Carlos Perkins does not believe in due process. And let's not forget, Carlos Perkins lives in the most crime-ridden neighborhood in his district. Where his home is, that area has the most crime in his district.
So let me start. I have a number of questions, Mr. Chairman, and if you allow me a little bit of flexibility. Let me just say to the chief publicly what I've shared with him privately, that I do believe that you are the right person to lead the department in this season. I am encouraged by your leadership. I'm encouraged by your openness. I'm encouraged by your willingness to engage in conversations in community in ways that I think can move us forward. With that, I also share with you that I'm also encouraged by your willingness to be open, to be held accountable for the work that we are called to do, that this is beyond us, that there's a greater community in which we serve. And so with that, I want to applaud the effort that's reflected in this budget. One of the commitments that you made earlier this year was to staff out the technology piece for IMPD, and I'm encouraged by that, because I think the community needs to be able to engage in a way that holds those that are called.
Is he faking an accent right now? I'm gonna have to go back and watch a video of his. It sounds like he's faking an accent.
To serve us accountable, and that is through the technology effort. So I'm encouraged to see within this budget, seven new professionals that'll be working with technology to be able to build out that, and hopefully, before the end of 2025, we can see some work. A couple of quick questions for me. In Character One, the budget amount is largely informed by a particular number of sworn officers hired each year, and the number this year reflects seventeen forty-three, right? IMPD has missed that number every year over the last three years. This is not a critique of the department. It is not a critique of you, as most major cities have faced issues with law enforcement staffing.
Why do you think that is, huh? Hey, Carlos Perkins, why do you think that is? Maybe it's because your party doesn't give a shit about crime. You're like, you know what? These people just need to have more money, then they'll stop committing crime, like it's a fucking ransom or something. Perkins is a dope.
Right. But how can we, as a body, honor this budget request when there's no evidence that we'll be able to meet that number, and again, go back and tell our constituents that we need tax dollars to hire more officers, when we have not proven that we can meet the projected number of sworn officers that we have? That's my first question.
Well, I appreciate that. And like I said in my remarks, I think it shows a commitment to public safety. Every city who has slashed the number of officers in their agencies have paid a significant price, and now they're clawing back and trying to put that money back in the budget. I think it sends a message to our officers and to the community that maybe there isn't that commitment. And I understand where your point is, that we're not spending that particular money, but that money goes back to the city if we don't spend it, and then it's reallocated the following year. I don't know what the future holds in classes in April and August and December of next year. We are seeing an increase in applications. Will we get to seventeen forty-three? No, probably not. However, every single day, there are vacancies on the shifts, and right now, we have not slashed any of our services or told community members that we won't be showing up on their particular run, but we're very close to that. And we do that by making sure that overtime is used to fill those shifts. We relieve the pressure on our homicide detectives by hiring a tax shift of detectives that come in to take the natural death investigations, overdose investigations, suicide death investigations, so that the homicide investigators can focus on their homicide cases. We have about close to two million dollars, maybe two and a half million dollars in unfunded overtime and regular costs to staff major events in our city that continue to grow every single year, that if we are not doing, if we're not providing staff, those are not safe. Overtime details in Broad Apple and downtown is a deal to make sure that when you have hundreds of thousands of people coming to a space, that there's safety. Overtime for traffic enforcement and DUI enforcement, and for going after the street takeovers and spinners, or dealing with the potential issues that have come up from, you know, random things throughout our years, so.
Let me bring that up, actually. Hey, look at this shit. Eptown buzz. ISP troopers and IMPD officers attacked by street racing mob. Carlos Perkins, where are you? That's what I want to know. You keep complaining about IMPD and everything that's going on. You want officers fired. But where the fuck are you at, huh, clown? Your neighborhood has the highest crime rate in your district, and what are you doing about it? Nothing. All you're doing is saying it's because of white supremacy. You're a dope.
The money, also money within that Character One, is utilized to...
Doctor of Ministry, by the way, this fucking ass clown.
Pay overtime, frankly. Our budget has never truly reflected the actual overtime that we spend. I think it's allocated at about two and a half million dollars. We're probably closer to twenty million dollars this year in overtime expenses. And I want to be more, I don't want to spend that kind of money in overtime. I'd rather not. We're wearing our officers out. We don't want to put them in a bad position, but I also don't want to demoralize our workforce or send the wrong message by saying, we know you need seventeen forty-three, but we're just not committed to giving you that money.
And I think, just to follow up on that, Chief, I think that I do here agree with most of what you just shared. I think we can get to a closer-aligned number. I think if we look at the average number of offices that we've had over the last three years versus our projected or desired number, we're working with a very tight budget, there are a number of priorities, there are a number of community issues that we're trying to address, and I feel like this particular, especially in Character One, is based on this projected ideal number, when the evidence has shown us over the last three years that we're not getting to that number. So what's a more reasonable number to get to, and if so, there's a process later on in the fiscal year that the department could come back and say, we've met this number, and we want to be able to go higher. It is not to demoralize our forces, not that we're not supporting our force.
That's exactly what you're doing.
It's how do we get to a more ideal, like a more realistic number, given the tightness of our budget? I do have a second question around what is included in this budget for continuing professional development and implicit bias training for current staff members, given the high volume of shooting by department this year. I think we are, at this point, at about eleven, with maybe something happening today. So how much of this budget is set aside for professional development and implicit bias training?
Well, let's just put, while we pump the brakes there, pal, maybe if people would stop shooting at cops, they wouldn't have to shoot at them. Seems pretty simple. I think everybody in that council should have to take an IQ test.
First, I want to be careful and not make the connection between officer-involved shootings and implicit bias. There's absolutely no evidence that any of our shootings has been a result of any implicit bias whatsoever.
No, but that's what Carlo Perkins is trying to say. Hey, why are you shooting so many black people? Well, probably because a whole bunch of black people are shooting at them.
And if there is that evidence, then we'll take immediate action against that. We continuously train our officers in the academy. They get it from the beginning. We talk about the need to be mindful. I wouldn't say there's a specific dollar amount allocated specific to implicit bias training. However, it is ingrained. You know, four years ago, when we started talking about this, we had to put things in the budget to pay for that. Those recurring costs, that training remains in our curriculum and remains part of our, you know, what we preach both to our new recruits and our incumbents.
Mr. Chairman, one more question?
One more, Counselor. You responded earlier this week to a press release that Counselor Allen and I named in our intention to change the merit board process to empower you, as a chief, to remove officers faster from misconduct. As it is currently written, the merit board will not meet to hear recommendation of firing until after an officer's court case has ended.
Yeah.
Which may take several years. You opened your presentation tonight sharing how disappointed you are, sometimes frustrated by some of the behaviors of the bad apples that's amongst the IMPD. I know that you have shared a statement naming that you would collaborate with us, and we look forward to that collaboration. Can you commit tonight to continue working with us to strengthen... Can you commit tonight to continue to work with us to strengthen that merit board process to ensure our community trust and public safety, and to hold those accountable who have broken the law? I know that there's a bunch of conversations around this, around what we can and cannot do. I think that the community needs to know that as the Chief of Police, that you have that authority to be able to, if somebody is charged with breaking the law, and what we've seen over the last 30 days, something that just, you know, breaks all of our hearts, that you're empowered to do so.
Well, I think that, as I've gotten to know you, and I know other members of this council, I'm always open and will always be open to having conversations on any topic that you all find important. That's my job. You all serve the community of Indianapolis, as do I, and I will work with you in any way that I can. I do briefly want to just make sure that we understand that when I suspend somebody pending a recommendation of termination, they stop being paid, they don't earn towards their pension, they don't get any benefits from the city, they have no police powers, they absolutely have no access to the city information systems or the buildings, they're completely on their own, they can find another job if they want, but they do not get paid while they're on that suspension. What I will tell you over and over again has been shown that sometimes our civilian boards are less lenient on cops than cops are on cops. I think the perception is that somehow cops can't hold cops accountable. I disagree with that. But it is, having the merit process in place does allow for due process and does allow for some outside review of the administration's actions. But like I said at the beginning, I'm happy to have any discussion with you or any member of this council at any time on any subject.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Counselor Muscary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is, can you explain to the audience how the drop works, and how many officers we lost with the drop in the last couple of years?
Drop is called the Deferred Retirement Option, I believe. One of my chiefs behind me is currently in it. It allows you to defer your pension for up to five years. And what that means is that if I today decided that I want to, well, first of all, you have to be 52 years old, and you have to have been on the job at least 20 years. If I decided today I want to retire in five years, my pension would lock in at the rate it is today, I would work five more years, they would take whatever that pension payment would be for the year, put it aside, and then at the end of that five years, pay me a lump sum payment, whatever that is, $150,000, $200,000. But my pension was locked in five years ago. I can't give you the exact number, but it's well over 100 officers, probably over the last four years, that were already in the drop, or have signed up for the drop, or have just outright retired without the drop. Well, that number's higher than 100, but a drop specifically, it's probably over 100. And we can provide you the exact number since 2020, not at this moment, but at a later time.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Leader Maori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief, for your time being here tonight, and thank you for your staff and everybody here tonight, and all your officers out here protecting us tonight and every day. You had mentioned that the overtime cost this year is roughly around $20 million spent, right?
Approximately.
Okay. And I'm not looking to get into specifics about that necessarily. I'm more concerned with the effect of burnout that it could potentially be having on your officers. And I recall, if it was maybe last year or two years ago, there was a morale survey that went out, and it was very, very poor numbers in the morale, and not to any fault of your own, or from what I understood from that survey. But how often are those morale surveys being put out? I believe it was by FOP, but I would assume they partner with you on that sort of thing.
We, I know Deputy Chief Terry in the Operations Division uses surveys quite often on multiple topics. And one of the things that we've started doing is putting focus groups together on certain topics as we develop a policy or develop, or implementing something new, so that, you know, we don't just drop things on them. We dropped a lot of things on our cops from 2020 to 2023, whether it was additional oversight, or body worn cameras, or a lot of things, just one thing after the other for three years in a row. And any person in any profession at some point is going to say, what are we doing? And so we're trying to be a little bit smarter in some of the things and how we implement them, just because it becomes overwhelming, especially for people who, you know, cops, who don't like the way things are and don't like change. And navigating that is difficult sometimes. So I don't know that we've done a morale study, but we have asked questions about what motivates you, what keeps you here, what kind of things are you looking for to help you do your job better? Some of the things we've heard about are childcare, or, you know, different things like that. Those are some of the questions that we've asked, but I can't give you a number of, like, what people feel. You know, I have a view on morale that may be different than some. A lot of morale is individual-driven. Like, if I'm going to be so consumed with things that I can't control, then obviously, I'm not going to be very happy in what I do. If I find pleasure and I find happiness in the things that I can control, then I seem to be a happier employee. Like most human beings, we get wrapped around the axle on things that are well beyond our control, and that frustrates us. And so we try to preach that to our officers, we try to tell them, we remind them, every time we have a swearing in or a promotion, remember your why. Why did you start this job? What made you swear you're right-handed? Was it become wealthy? You're in the wrong profession. Why did you do it? But there's certainly things that we can impact that would improve employee morale. And I'm just as concerned about burnout as you are.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that answer. And I would encourage you to do the pulse survey or something along those lines of just where morale's at and how it can be improved. And I understand, I completely, wholeheartedly agree with you, that that can be an individual thing, where they are looking at things they cannot control and letting that weigh down on them too much. But however, there are also things that even us as counselors could do potentially to help with that. And if there's anything at all we could do to help. I'm sure you have the support of this body. And we'd love to see this number in 2025, the staffing number, get back up above 1,600 at least. I know that's a tall, that could be a tall order, but, and I want to see us continue to fund you for 1,743, because that means we're at least trying to get to that number. And I want to see those achievable goals met. And anything we can do on this body to help, we certainly want to help. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Leader Maori. Counselor Anay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Command Staff, CFO for being here. Always enjoy seeing the IMPD team. Just a couple of comments, a couple of questions. Chief, I think the number you mentioned first, your presentation, was that 10,500. That's a big number. I think that's an important number. I was just curious, because I don't think a lot of people maybe would recognize or associate that with IMPD. Do you have any idea about how many people made up that 10,500 number? I think that'd be kind of interesting to better understand the issue that we have in the city today.
So in order to, and Chief Cummings is behind me, so she'll correct me, to be taken into emergency detention, you have to be, you have to have a known mental health condition. You have to be a danger to yourself. And, okay, there's a third prong. My point is, is that you are, this is a complete reflection of not being the real police for about 13 years. So, yes, those are the most, they're very sick people. Sometimes violent situations that our officers, not NCAT, not clinicians, not social workers, everyday police officers, and firefighters, and medics successfully take them for help. The officers don't get credit enough for that. We hear all the time about all the ones that, the one, two, which are tragic, that go wrong every year, and the fingers get pointed about how IMPD needs this and that and the other. Our officers do it right more than they do it wrong.
Well, I think that's a success story that we don't always hear about, as you know, that I hope to maybe open a paper in a couple of weeks and read something that highlights that, because I think it's something that people in the community would like to know, and I think that would be something that would really, I think, hone in on what IMPD's mission. The point of the question was just simply, when you referenced the 10,500, you weren't saying 10,500 people, you were saying 10,500 interactions, or did I misunderstand that?
Those are, the numbers I got from our NCAT team were 10,500 individuals.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's, I misunderstood that, but I appreciate the clarification, and that makes it even more incredible, frankly. I just wanted to continue to advocate, I know that in this budget, we are not going to see huge progress as it relates to the IMPD facilities. I know the chief mentioned the North District that will be in the works. The money that we have allocated to do some design work on that North District facility, I believe that in 10 or 15 years, we will look back, for those of us who are here and those of us who aren't here, and have some pride in the fact that the North District blueprint will be probably a model that will be used throughout Indianapolis, Marion County, for the IMPD. So I'm very excited about that. I know the department has scaled each facility, each district headquarters, and so, love the North side, but certainly love the South side a little bit more, in full disclosure. And so, you know, would love to see the King Avenue Southwest District looked at, or even maybe the one there in the Southeast District, although maybe they're not in quite as bad a shape as we see some of our other facilities. I do want to make a point, that I really hope this council, the next, a couple of budgets, looks at creating or restoring the IMPD Training Academy in the facility. Think it opened in 84. It's not what it needs to be for a 21st century policing agency.
Oh, my God.
And I think that this council should insist that that Training Academy and that Training Facility is specific to IMPD. I don't think it should be shared between multiple agencies. And so I think it's very important for us, as we look at different facility improvements to the IMPD enterprise, to really look at either a new training facility specifically for IMPD, or repairing and rehabbing the current one we have. Couple more, Mr. Chairman, I'll make them quick, if you allow.
Yes.
Counselor?
Thank you. So, you know, the topic of overtime has been brought up, and everybody, I think, maybe has an opinion on it. I just wanted to make the point that when you go to a Colts game, or you attend a convention in the city, you know, we've had a busy year in Indianapolis in 2024. There's a lot for all of us in this community to be proud of. What do you always see? You always see cops, you always see IMPD officers, not all IMPD, but a significant portion running traffic, shutting down streets, interacting with residents and visitors. And I don't think they get the credit that we couldn't put on these events. Indianapolis couldn't tell the story about being the convention center of America, or the, you know, the number one convention center in this country, without really strong security, inner, local successes between our public safety and law enforcement groups. And I just wanted to thank IMPD. I'm sure they complain, some officers complain, and we talk about burnout, but regardless of whether they're complaining or not, they're still showing up, and we should really show our appreciation. I think I read somewhere that some are making more than you, Chief, but from the conventions and things that I go to, I don't think that they should be making less. I think probably you should be making more, if you want to know the truth.
Come on, get to it. Just yapping.
And then, and lastly, I just wanted to thank you. You've been in office in your position since, I think, about February, and you've taken, I think, a strong approach. Every police chief's different. Every police chief has a different style, but I think the style that you present to this department in this city, in this moment, is really important. And so we've seen some changes that you've made. I think those changes will be long-lasting. You've made some changes in your command staff. I think those are positive. I think it creates something that maybe we see in other major cities. And I just wanted to leave my last comment on this. As we talk about morale the last couple of years, I was always a little bit disappointed because I felt like the issues that we face on morale are new. And I had a conversation with my grandfather, who served on the Indianapolis Police Department for 35 years, and I said, you know, Grandpa, right? I said, what were the issues in 1965, when you joined IMPD? What bothered you when you were a young copper? Pay? Benefits? Facilities? A lack of support, or perception of a lack of support from maybe those who are running the show? And the only reason I say that is because I think a lot of the issues that our department faces today are not new. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't put an emphasis on solving them, but I think it should give us a little bit of comfort in knowing that we are always striving, and have always strived, at least in this modern era in Indianapolis, to address these issues.
Listen, buddy.
And I believe you're a chief that will address them in a significant way. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, hold on. There's a lot to say, just to say, good job on what you're doing. Just want to say, this whole, like, segment is like over an hour and a half, okay?
Counselor Bain.
Ugh, stop pillow busting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Chief Bailey, and your team for being here to echo Counselor Anay. I just want to say, I really appreciate your voice. Since you've become chief, it is something that my constituents have noticed, and I know a lot of us on this council have noticed, and it's very much appreciated. I do want to just give a reminder how important it is for counselors and anyone that's able to participate in ride-alongs with IMPD officers. I think I've done seven or eight since I've been on the council, and every time, it is a reminder that IMPD are not only some of the most professional people, professional officers in the country, but also some of the most patient people in the country.
That is so true.
And so I think that is important to point out.
He is right, 100% right. I have been on three ride-alongs, and I'm not even in office, okay? That's how much I want to know what's going on. These are all Friday nights, third shift. I want to see where the action's at. I tell you what, Mr. Bain, my favorite city counselor, is not wrong. They are so damn patient. It is unbelievable. Sometimes I wish they got a little bit more aggressive, but that's just me.
I think it's also important to point out that every time that I've been on a ride-along, and it has been constant, through every response that I've been a part of, is the suspect or the situation that we are responding to always ties back to either addiction or mental health.
Not mine.
And that could just be a fluke throughout the seven or eight ride-alongs I've been along, and the, you know, five or six responses that we take every time. But I think it's important to point out, there's an epidemic of addiction in our community. And I don't necessarily think that is something that IMPD is able to fix.
But somehow weed is going to fix all the addiction, right? That's what I'm being told, that we need a coping mechanism, because I'm feeling sad and life's got me down. Womp, womp, womp. Just like alcoholics, listen, booze heads, I'm calling you out too, okay? Weed is not going to fix it. Boozing is not going to fix it. Eating more food to become a fat fuck isn't going to fix it either. Take some accountability, realize the world is a shitty place, and move on with life. Do what you can.
You know, you guys are on the front lines to respond to that, but the solution to that is much bigger. But I do want to get to some questions I have, because if you look at Southwest District, for instance, where I represent and live. You know, we have some pretty large beats. And, you know, due to us having the obvious staffing shortages, it's not one officer per beat. And like, south of 465, and west of the White River, is massive. But at any given time, we might only have two officers there, and the population continues to grow on the outlying areas of our county. When we're looking at, when we're looking at distribution of officers, you know, I know we're short on officers, but when we're looking at the distribution, do we take population growth into account?
Well, I would love to tell you that over the 26 years of my career, that we've had some scientific way of measuring that in placing officers. We're not quite there yet. So population should be, growth should be, should be part of that equation, but if I'm going to be truthful, it is mostly based on run load. So where are our officers? Where are the most runs? Where is the most violence occurring? How quickly do we have to respond to those? And so a lot of those officers are going to be concentrated in the core. And so a lot of those officers are going to be concentrated in the core of our city where most of the things occur. That's when I talked about seventeen forty-three. Seventeen forty-three is a budgeted amount. This city, this county, needs well over two thousand officers.
That's true.
To properly patrol it in the way and protect it the way it deserves.
Oh, I think I know where this is going.
We're talking four hundred square miles. The city of Boston is, what, eighty-six square miles? They have two thousand cops, and they have about six hundred thousand people. So you, and when they promote that they've had five homicides this year.
I don't believe that number, by the way. I just don't, not one bit. You're going to say that it only had five homicides? I don't think so, because that was like a dramatic drop. We'll see what happens at the end of the year, but I think those numbers are fake.
That maybe there's a reason for that. They can put cops where they need to be to focus on the things they need to focus on. And it's not just about locking people up. More cops does not mean we need to lock more people up. It means that allows our officers to spend more time doing the things we want them to do, community engagement, investigating crimes more thoroughly, removing the stack of internet crimes against children files that we can't get to off the desks, getting into these phones and where our lives are and allowing our detectives to have that information in order to prosecute people for their crimes. So when we talk about those things, it's not about cops and robbers locking people up. It's about doing all those things that our community expects. Counselor Hart is well involved in technology and artificial intelligence. We are not prepared for that. We don't have the capability. We don't have the technology. We don't have the systems, and we don't have the expertise to deal with what's coming. And it's coming, and it's coming quickly, and we have to start preparing for those things. And so you're right, we don't have enough people assigned to the West Side. I live in Franklin Township. There may be one in Franklin Township, the entire township, at any one time because they're being pulled and there's just, and there's no crime there, right? There's not a lot of crime there. Violent crime is elsewhere. And so it is an issue, right? And we look at, we try to look at all those things, run loads and work distribution, too. If I'm putting two or three people out west of four sixty-five and they're taking, between the two of them, five runs a shift, but the same amount of people in the center are taking ten runs each, the workload has to be distributed too. So we can't just look at population. We have to look at what the total workload is, runs, crashes. All those things have to be taken into account when we distribute our cops. And right now, we're not in a position where we have a lot of cops to make those decisions. Usually when we assign classes, we're just trying to fill holes from where we left off the previous class.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And, you know, I think it's important that we do everything we can to keep our officers on the street. Could you give us an update on what transportation of suspects looks like when an officer has to unfortunately make an arrest? Is the officer themselves, like where I live on the Southwest Side, again, it could take thirty minutes to take someone to the Criminal Justice Center and leaving just one officer down there.
Yeah, I've been part of it. I've seen it.
I believe all of our shifts or almost all of our shifts have at least one, if not multiple, public safety officers assigned to them. They are responsible for prisoner transport, but they're also responsible for responding to crashes. Now, that isn't always the case, and that number fluctuates. When this council approved public safety positions a few years ago, the purpose of that was to try to use those public safety officers to do crashes and maybe burglary reports, evidence technician work, so that didn't have a sworn officer to do it. The Sheriff's Department has its own set of issues, its own staffing, its own budgeting issues. They ran the wagons. They stopped doing that. We had to pivot, and now our public safety officers, public safety officers mostly do that transportation. We have the vans for them to do that, but there are occasions when the officers may have to transport themselves.
Yeah, I had spoken to a few officers that, you know, did have to make the transport, but it's good to know that, you know, we are prioritizing the public safety officers. And again, just with the goal of keeping the patrol officers out on patrol, keeping in that same vein, you know, one thing that always surprises me is the amount of time officers have to spend on reports whenever there's an incident. Do you believe that process is streamlined the best that it can be right now when officers have to, you know, find a place to park to, you know, that takes them off patrol in order to fill out those reports?
No. And, but this is, that's, that's, that's an issue in every major city. Our police officers are more statistician gatherers, stat gathers, than they are report takers. The process of completing a report is pretty cumbersome because of requirements from the FBI on crime stats. Obviously, you all want crime stats and you want certain demographic things. The community wants that, so that, that information has to be gathered, and that takes time to do it. I'm hopeful that artificial intelligence will help us do this more quickly, especially utilizing body worn cameras, the questions we ask, the order in which we ask the questions so that, you know, this is, this is my pie in the sky in conversations I have had with the counselor. What I would love to see is that as soon as you walk up to somebody, you ask a question, certain questions in certain order. By the time you get back to your car, most of your report is written for you, and you just have to fact check it. There was a time in my career where we used to call our reports in and civilians type them up, but we didn't collect stats. We weren't, we're missing things that help us and our intelligence analysts move the ball forward. So is it the most efficient? No. Is it the best we can do right now with the technology we have? Yes. I've not ran into a police chief anywhere in the country that says my record management system is awesome. In fact, it's the opposite.
Thank you, Counselor Bain. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to thank you, Counselor Bain, Chief, Counselor Hart.
Leroy Robinson knows this has taken forever. He's just trying to rush through the questions.
Chairman, and I'll be short, and just because I'm new, so I'm not going to get into a whole lot of details.
We'll see.
But just really go into, you know, a couple of the observations and commitments that I made to the chief when we met. And those were a couple of things. One was that, you know, I've been on the council for a term, but it was always approving what has already been approved in this committee. And so this is the first time actually getting to see how the sausage is made, so to speak.
We've got less than a half an hour, boys.
And I've seen the things change over the years, right? I've seen us adjust pay. I've seen us try recruitment efforts through advertising and everything that, all the things that we've mentioned here today. I've seen us add the bonuses, right? I've seen us add the technologies. And I've also seen the numbers remade stagnant or in this case go down.
Kind of pacing error.
And so, you know, that was the observation that I brought to you, to you, Chief, that day. And then I made two commitments as a counselor, you know, now dedicated this committee and putting a lot more focus on public safety and specifically your department. And those two commitments were this, one, technology, right? And you've talked, touched on a couple of those things, and I'm not going to go into those details, but you were right, we're spot on, and I'm here to help you, and I remain committed to those things. And I will for the next four years, as long as my leader allows me to be on this committee. But the other two, I think, are very important for this committee and for me to talk about the most this evening, which the commitment I made to you was, as a counselor, the plan I brought to you was to grow morale and recruitment to help you do that, because I don't think it's working what you guys are doing. I think you're trying, don't get me wrong, but I don't think it's getting the numbers that we need. I mean, it's not getting us to two thousand, and I don't hold you in regard for our lack of trying, but I think it's going to take us, I think it's going to take a community, and I think it's going to take the effort of counselors in their district to help build morale, right? To help recruit officers to be and use the connections that we have and our voice and our power to do that in order that we, to support our communities. And that's the commitment that I'll continue to bring every year. I've got larger plans that we talked about that I am moving forward with, and I'm happy to bring to those this committee when the time is right. But it's things like organizing meetings with business owners, right? When they're having issues with what's going on in their area. It's having meetings with churches to talk about what they can do and what we can do as a community to help spread the word.
You're not going to like that.
About how to recruit, how to be a police officer, and the benefits of it beyond just the financial aspects of it. But that's the things that we have to do as counselors in our committee, especially the ones that are on this committee, is talk about how we can help support our police department and not just doing it in the votes here or talking about reducing your budget numbers and allocating it to some, somebody else. It's actually putting time and effort in holding meetings, hosting meetings, being with the schools, being with the other leaders in our community, and that's what I commit to you and I'll continue to commit to you in order to help grow the morale for you.
Average seniority in the organization is sixteen years.
Recruit officers to be and use the connections that we have and our voice and our power to do that in order that we, to support our communities. And that's the commitment that I'll continue to bring every year. I've got larger plans that we talked about that I am moving forward with, and I'm happy to bring to those this committee when the time is right. But it's things like organizing meetings with business owners, right? When they're having issues with what's going on in their area. It's having meetings with churches to talk about what they can do and what we can do as a community to help spread the word about how to recruit, how to be a police officer, and the benefits of it beyond just the financial aspects of it. But that's the things that we have to do as counselors in our committee, especially the ones that are on this committee, is talk about how we can help support our police department and not just doing it in the votes here or talking about reducing your budget numbers and allocating it to some, somebody else. It's actually putting.
That was for Carlos Perkins.
Time and effort in holding meetings, hosting meetings, being with the schools, being with the other leaders in our community, and that's what I commit to you and I'll continue to commit to you in order to help grow the morale for your officers, for our officers, for our city's officers, and help grow those recruitment numbers over the next four years. Because I do believe, deep down in my heart, that, you know, we hear these bad stories that, you know, we wanted to fund police budgets. Or we want to, or that the police officers are bad. And I think that's, that's the squeaky wheel, but I don't think that's the majority. I think a majority of people are very grateful, and they know that the fabric of our society is built on public safety, and without it, we don't have Indianapolis. We don't have what it takes to be able to go to work, school, and have a recreation within Indianapolis. And so that's why I'm so committed to it now that I'm going to be here on this committee and be able to report back on those initiatives that I've shared with you. And again, my challenge to everybody here is to do the same thing. Get your community involved, be a part of it, and be loud and be, be the loud counselors that we do during campaign season, but do it all, do it all year long. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Hey, and some have been reading my Twitter. I mean, for real. Because this is what I kept saying to Rick Snyder, who is publicly trying to help you out. Social media is the best platform to say, we're on your side. And Paul Hart made a very good point. You do have squeaky wheels. Guess what? Every profession does. Remember the doctor that was filling up on little girls? Ta-da! I mean, you can't even trust your own, people can't even trust parents sometime, so.
Counselor, additional comments or questions?
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief Bailey, for your discussion tonight and everyone coming in. I appreciate the staff being here and our former North Commander, Wally, who's now ascended up to the mothership, so to speak. We miss him out there on the North Side. And if you're looking for a nice location on the North Side District, District Three is very accommodating. So if you want to come up, I can add some real estate agents, help you out.
No, Democrats are scumbags. No, thank you, Bootsy.
Just, I want to touch on this technology angle. Counselor Hart and I have the benefit of chairing the Artificial Intelligence Commission that's currently in progress. And I know, I think countywide, we're not prepared for artificial intelligence, and it's coming at us fast. And so I'm an advocate, and I've mentioned this previously, about because we don't have the personnel numbers, we need to leverage technology better.
Oh, I see where this is going.
And I know from, you know, pulling out some technology notes here about the tasers and the LPRs and the BWCs and the ICVs and the safety cameras. At least here, you have a counselor who will give you all the money you need for technology. I think you guys work very, very hard, but I think we need to work smarter. And to do that, I think we need more technology. You mentioned reports. There's technology that will write the report for you.
Yeah, we know that. That's what he was saying.
It will listen to your conversations, or as the officer's driving from point A to point B, can literally dictate and the report is done, for the most part. So to the extent we can leverage that technology better.
Oh, my God.
Use crime intelligence analysts.
This is going to be twenty minutes of fucking filibustering.
I understand that that's been a boon to the crime solving rate is, we're really getting deeper into that, particularly from a social media standpoint and anticipating issues instead of only being reactive. I think that's very helpful. So I just want, I don't have a real question other than, again. I think technology will be very helpful going forward. I might ask one just simple question. Of these various technologies that IMPD has invested in, in the last four or five years, particularly significant funds we did through the ARPA money and some of the federal COVID money, what are you seeing as being a better return in our investment for technology than some of the other means?
The automatic license plate reader technology has been the biggest game changer, both in helping find missing people, wanted people, stolen cars after there's parks rather than, you know, than pursuits, but also shooting suspects, homicide suspects. That, to me, has been the biggest. And we have lots of gaps still that remain in our, in our county with, that don't have that technology.
So do you feel you have an insufficient number of LPRs currently?
For four hundred square miles, I don't think we have, we don't quite, we don't quite have enough. And we are, we're trying to work within our existing budget to identify ways and work with the vendor to add more to our inventory as we move forward.
Roughly, how many do you currently have?
Three hundred and fifty, roughly.
That's a lot.
How many would you like to have?
As many as you could have.
My intention was to add about a hundred and fifty more this year. We didn't quite get there, but I didn't want to come back to the council in the middle of the year. I made that promises to, well, Counselor Perkins. And so I didn't come back, but we will, we're trying to work within our existing budgets and renegotiate some of our contracts with some of our vendors who want to keep our business.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Delaney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Chief, and your executive command staff here that's here this evening. I've had the opportunity to work with several of you when I was.
God, look at this. Ugh, gross, just gross Fiona. You know, I wonder if she's watching my videos. Have you noticed she's just letting her hair become gray? Ugh, look at that slouch and everything. She's like a slug, slug McCormick. Ugh, slimy McCormick.
The deputy prosecutor, and just am truly honored to have been able to work alongside you and see the work that you do firsthand. I know you've had a lot of thanks here and congratulate, not congratulations, but just thank you for your work, and I think that it is very deserved for the work that you do for us and for our city. That, I wanted to go from there, though, and move on to traffic safety. Thank you for acknowledging that in your opening remarks. That is.
How much you want to bet she's going to say, we need to have automatic ticketing?
That, along with roads, it's the number, those are the top two issues I hear about. The folks, I'm from the North Side of Indianapolis. The folks on the North Side are really concerned about reckless driving behavior, and I know it's not just on the North Side, it's all over the city. I co-sponsored the Vision Zero Ordinance earlier this year that just recently passed. And the goal of the Vision Zero Ordinance is to eliminate all fatal and serious injury crashes on city streets by twenty thirty-five. And so with that being a priority of the council as well, could you talk a little bit about some of IMPD's plans to address reckless driving and traffic safety?
These people are so awful.
And I will, I was going to initially bifurcate it, but you already addressed the traffic, the license plate readers. Knowing that, and maybe you can do that first and go back, but knowing that you can't issue citations or arrest anybody for those watching at home because of state law. So the license plate readers, I was hoping you could talk a little bit about what you can actually do with them versus what, you know, maybe folks at home think, like they're not catching your license plates if you're running red lights or things like that. But if you could talk a little bit about, are there ways that technology could help address traffic safety as kind of like a subpart to that traffic safety question?
If you really want to look into it, see which demographic this will affect the most, okay? And then you're really going to be bitching about equity.
Yeah, absolutely. I believe that there is. And hopefully, within the next two weeks, if we meet our deadlines, we'll be providing you a potential ordinance to help us deal with street takeovers, reckless driving in the street that matches some of the work that's being done in Louisville, Kentucky, as all the major cities are dealing with some of this reckless driving, street takeover, spinning, those type of things. So that's one thing that I think that we're going, in the next couple of weeks, hopefully you have an ordinance in your hand that helps put some teeth and update our current ordinances. We attempted to get some, some laws changed at the state level last year. We weren't successful. We're going to go back to the state legislature again this year. But at least at the local level, we'll be able to, you know, hopefully hold some of these cars. In Louisville, they hold them for six months automatically if we tow them, and that's for reckless driving. for reckless driving, spinning, where you put someone in danger, you run from the police, those type of things.
I can get on board with that.
So, you'll see that ordinance, it's not quite that stringent, but the, the, the key to some of this is taking some of these individuals' cars. That's specific to street racing, spinning, those type of things.
Do you think Ryan Mears, hey, dumb fuck, do you think Ryan Mears is going to allow that to happen? Do you think the courts are going to go that hard? They're not. They have the capability of going that far, but they choose not to.
As far as the general, just what I see is disregard for public safety and for just each other on the roadway. That is more difficult, given our staffing and resources. We get a couple million dollars a year in overtime money from the state and the federal government to do that. It's harder to find officers that want to do that work anymore because of the amount of overtime that we have available to us. Part of the budget will pay for some additional speed detection devices, which will, we can put in the hands of our officers. We're upgrading some of the equipment within our cars for issuing tickets. But I am going to advocate for and be a champion for the state allowing us, as a city of Indianapolis and Marion County, to utilize red light cameras and speed detection cameras. There are ways we can do it that make it constitutional, that, 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 that use data, that don't put these cameras in neighborhoods that are disproportionate, that use data to-
Wait, 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 wait. Let me go back to that last part.
And some of the equipment within our cars for issuing tickets. But I am going to advocate for and be a champion for the state allowing us, as a city of Indianapolis and Marion County, to utilize red light cameras and speed detection cameras. There are ways we can do it that make it constitutional, that, 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 that use data, that don't put these cameras in neighborhoods that are disproportionate.
Oh, of course, of course. If you, you are such a fucking clown, Bailey. You and the rest of the Democrats are absolute clowns. You want a security state. I will never, I will never want that. Until you can prove to me that you can enforce the traffic law, I will never be a part of that, you cuck.
That use data to place those, those individual things.
And guess where those, where those are gonna be at?
I believe that that is a non, it can remove these negative encounters that can, that can happen and incur between law enforcement and people on our roadways. It does not and should not take away from our police department. It's not a replacement for an officer. Our traffic unit needs to be double, if not one and a half times the size of it is, so that they have the ability to deal with the events and to issue tickets and be in those school zones and in those areas. So, that is my commitment to utilize what, if any, influence I have at the legislature. And IMPD is not interested in any revenue. I am 100% against any revenue being given back to our agency as a result of traffic enforcement. The purpose of traffic enforcement is not to-
You can do that now.
... generate money for the police department. We saw where that got police departments in trouble in Missouri after what happened in Ferguson. We have no interest in that. If you were to come to me tomorrow and say, "We're not giving you any money from traffic tickets," fine. Take it. We don't want it. That's not the purpose. And so-
You can do that now, though. You can do that now, you just don't want to.
You know, they're testing, the state has allowed testing of speed cameras in, in construction zones. We want to keep our construction workers safe, and I applaud that, but we want to keep our kids safe. I want to keep the kids that go to the three schools between Emerson and Ritter-
You could literally do that right now, but you choose not to. You can enforce the traffic laws right now, but this cuck, he doesn't want to because he wants Indy to be a security state. If you want to fix the traffic problem, then do it. You can do it right now. And this is the problem with cucks like with Bailey, with Brianna Delaney, with assholes like Jesse Brown. These people are so fucking stupid that they don't know that they could fix this right now, but because they're so pathetic, they don't want to. It's, and this is why they never want to debate me, because they'll totally lose every single time.
Safe on Washington Street. They deserve that safety, too, as they cross the street from the neighborhoods. And, you know, I don't know about you, when I'm on, I use Waze and I'm in Florida or somewhere else, I get the beep, red light camera ahead, I slow down. There are differing opinions whether they work and, you know, Big Brother and all that. I don't-
Yeah, it is Big Brother.
... want access to the data without a warrant, the same as any other technology.
You think the FBI needs a warrant? Really? Look at you with your drunk eyes right now.
Don't want to run the program as a police chief. I just want to advocate for it because I think that's a way that we can impact driving in our city that has gotten out of control. However, I can tell you that I can do better and I can be better and I can show better leadership within our agency-
Yeah.
-to encourage our officers-
Yeah.
-and to better use their discretionary time.
Oh, what did I just say? I've been saying this forever now. Bailey and Hawkeset gave the stand-down order for traffic enforcement. He could literally say, "Nope, we're going hard, motherfucker," but he doesn't want to because Chief Bailey is a cuck. He's a coward, and he should be shamed every second that you get.
Thank you, Chief, and I just want to close by saying, you know, we're here in a public forum, and I think this is the perfect place to recognize that we've spent a lot of this evening talking about understaffing of IMPD, and there is technology out there that can help fill some of that gap and to help calm drivers down, and-
You could literally do that right now.
And I'm glad you brought the two ideas together, saying like, "Here, here is a problem and here is a solution." And so, I applaud you for going over to the State House, and if there's anything that I can do, I'm happy to help and assist in that-
Yeah, debate me. Debate me on it, because you'll lose.
That task, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bain, final comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two quick questions. I know you said that the staff for IMPD is 1464. Do you have a stat that shows what the effective strength is, so like, if an officer's in training, it exempts them, or if they're injured or out on leave or something?
I use a range, anywhere between 65 and 100 officers are no longer, are not available. So, I don't have the exact number, but that's a good frame. So, we don't, even though the number is 1464, you can take about 100 off of that of not being, so we're really in the 1300s of operational police officers.
Okay, and then you mentioned as well that you were struggling, and I don't think this is an issue that's specific to IMPD, but struggling to attract women to join the police force. Does IMPD have the same training requirements for, like, physical tests and all that for both genders?
Yes. The state of Indiana, the Law Enforcement Training Board will be updating the physical fitness standards probably within the next year that more reflect the, look, I couldn't get down on the floor and do 30 sit-ups if you, right now, if you wanted me to, and that's a shame, that's on me. However, the tests that they're coming, sorry, I like Taco Bell. They, the standards they're coming up with more fit what you should be able to do at 21-years-old and what you should be able to do at 52-years-old, if you're going to be a police officer. You should be able to jump over a four-foot fence. You should be able to walk up, down the steps. You should be able to see things and do things. So, I think that the system will become a little more fair as we, as we move forward and not put some of this emphasis on things that I don't even believe were really scientifically necessary. And I think Eileen will tell you that what they were testing probably isn't a good indicator of whether or not you can be a good police officer or not. We value physical, physical fitness and we want it. However, those certain things, I don't think what should qualify or disqualify you from being on our agency.
Are you fucking kidding me? Are you fucking kidding me right now? Hey, you know, if you can't pick up somebody, it doesn't mean you can't be a cop still, really?
Just the last thing that I'll leave with, I know that there's like contract negotiations going on right now. As someone that recently became a father and has a second child on the way, I think one of the things that-
Hey, congrats, bud.
... we can do to look at quality of life for officers. And I believe it might be close to being implemented, but a parental leave for officers whenever a child's born or they adopt could really go a long way to not only supporting officers, but their families as well.
Well, I'm not involved in the, the back and forth contract negotiations at all. I'm not sure what they're, we're voting for. I know that the ordinance, I believe explicitly prohibits IFD and IMPD of being part of the city's policy, so if that doesn't happen, I'll be coming to this council asking you to change that ordinance to allow us to implement it ourselves.
It's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Graves.
Oh, great.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Hey, good evening, Chief, and everyone there. Always good to see you. I'm gonna jump on the staffing conversation as well, if you don't mind. We see today's numbers, 1464. We talk about budget at 1743. You mentioned as many as 2,000-plus could be needed, but then you mentioned minus one, another 100 or so on the 1464. With the same 400 square miles, Chief, can you talk about and bring comfort to all of us listening that we're safe here in Marion County, Indianapolis?
Excuse me. Our numbers are going down. Our run numbers did not go up last year. We are staffing our shifts with minimum staffing. Our districts know what they have to have to function properly to make sure that you get the proper response. Our cops are dedicated to that every day and they'll remain dedicated. They are tired. We're all tired. If you read the Star article this morning, look, there are going to be cops that make more than me. It's not hard to make more than me. In reality-
It's because of the overtime.
The, the one stat missing out of there, if they showed the average police officer, the average police chief in a major city makes $235,000 a year. I don't.
For what?
Right? Our cops, the overtime's available to them, and they're going to utilize it because they care about this community. But we have to do better as administration to make sure that we don't have tired cops that then make bad decisions. And there's a balance there to make sure you are protected. I believe you are protected because I believe we have the best women and men that ever wore the uniform that are currently serving right now. And they'll continue to serve you and make sure you and your family are safe.
And I appreciate that. Thank you. But, you know, when we hear words like understaffed, burnout, which we've heard this evening, overtime, you know, and again, we still have the entire county, Marion County, Indianapolis, 400 square miles. My thoughts on recruitment is, do you, do you ever use outside agencies, recruiting agencies, to help bolster up the numbers? And I also personally think that with so many colleges that have athletes around our city and Marion County and Central Indiana, I mean, those are, you know, I'd be sleeping outside of those guys' graduation doors soon as they walk out down the aisle with their degrees. I'd be bringing them right over here to Marion County because it's a, this is a first-class city.
No, it's a first-class shit hole is what it is because of people like Keith Graves and Carlos Perkins-
We have the great leadership, great team, but I think we-
You are not a leader, Keith. You are a racist.
Need to make sure that we're-
You and Carlos Perkins are straight up racists.
-intentional in providing the comfort that you said 2,000-plus, and then we're talking about minus 14, you know, 100 minus 1464. So, talk a little bit real quickly about the recruitment efforts.
Yeah, so we have tried just about everything. We have not hired an outside firm, and that's certainly something we can look at. I know that there are agencies that do that. But we've tried, we've spent over a million dollars in advertising, both radio, TV ads a few years ago. We've tried the bonuses, which did not, the hiring bonuses, which didn't work.
Shocker.
And so, we are, we did some restructuring with the recruiting unit, put them in Human Resources rather than the Community Engagement Bureau. And we're gonna try that out. We're trying this partnership out with the Colts. We're gonna try Interview Now. Interview Now is a, is a, is a platform that Fort Wayne has utilized for a while, and they are fully staffed. What, what, what some of the feedback we get is that it, you know, our process takes too long. But-
You want to vet them, right?
That's when we had two classes. Now we have three classes, so that process should be sped up a little bit. However, we also want to make sure that we go through all the right steps, that we're hiring the right people. We have not lowered our standards. That's why we take 140 people in, 130 people into background investigations to the mayor board and end up with 30, is because somewhere in there, we found something that, that says this is not someone we want on our police department. And so, there are universities, there are community events, they spend time at, you know, like mini, the mini marathon, talking to those type of athletes. In schools to try to create this pipeline much more upstream than, than, than later. And so, but there's, there's more work to be done, and obviously, I'm happy to sit down with you and talk about what your ideas are. But we haven't tried an outside firm yet to draw those candidates in, but it's something I have seen other agencies utilize.
I really appreciate your willingness to think outside the box. That's why I think we all have a lot of appreciation for you in this, in this role. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Chief. Anyone in the audience care to speak to the Chief's budget presentation? Come forward, please.
Yes.
Welcome, sir. State your name for the record, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Ronald Sanford. I was recently released from incarceration, and I'm with the Live Free Black Church Coalition. And we understand the vital importance of the police department being accountable to the community and maintaining public trust.
Oh, boy.
We also understand that for that accountability to be exercised, there must be transparency. With that said, Chief Bailey, could you please share how much the IMPD, IMPD has spent on misconduct settlements in the past year?
Sir, you want to direct your cautions to me, though?
Yes, sir. I would like for Chief Bailey to share how much the IMPD has spent on misconduct settlements in the past year.
Chief, Chief, you have that number spent on misconduct by officers, sir? That's your question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Settlements?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Settlements by officers?
Yeah, I would, I would say that we have a settlement fund. It doesn't necessarily mean that, that the officer committed misconduct, that sometimes business decisions are made through OCC and our attorneys to settle lawsuits. Doesn't necessarily mean that the officer or the city of Indianapolis did anything wrong. We're budgeted for about a million dollars in settlement costs.
You want to know why? Because sometimes it's cheaper just to shut them up and sign an NDA than it is to go through the entire process of it.
Sometimes that number goes over that, that number, and we find that money in other ways in our budget. However, I wouldn't characterize payouts as, as an admission or that it indicates that the officer or the department did something wrong. Sometimes it's cheaper to pay, settle a lawsuit than it is to take it to trial.
What'd I just say?
Chief, I think his question was how much?
Uh, we're budgeted for a million dollars. I don't have the exact amount.
How much have you spent? It was, it was, his question was how much has been spent?
It's probably over that million dollars, yes. I just don't have the exact amount.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience care to speak?
There you go.
Counselor Perkins?
Can I just ask, this is a follow-up, Chief, that, that, let's have a conversation afterwards if we can get that number for, for that brother. I think that's a legitimate question for him.
For my brother.
So, if we can do a follow-up conversation.
I have 400 pages of information here. I didn't have that one. I'm sorry.
That's fine. And just, Mr. Chair, just CFO, can we just touch bases real quick? I just need a raw number of the cost per sworn officer as a part of the budget. How much money do you, you use? What's the number that you use for a sworn officer when you're, when you're doing the budget? And we can, we can check afterwards. I also want to say, Chief, just thank you. And early in the conversation we had, early in the year, we talked about looking at a model in one of our sister cities around a mental health wellness center for, for officers. I think that is well, well due, and I would love to, over the next few months, not, maybe a few years, to work on that for, for officers. So, I want to put that on.
Thank you.
God, you suck.
Thank you, Counselors. Thank you, Counselors. So, sir, if you want to get with our clerk up front here to get your information, the Chief will give that to us and we'll send that to you via email. Appreciate you. So, any other comments or questions, we adjourn. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, team.
There we go. I didn't even know how long this video went, like a, an hour forty or something. So, I'm going to try and do the other videos, but like, there was one less, I don't know when it was last week, it was an hour and a half. There was one today. I think that was two hours or something. What I might do is just listen to it, and if there's anything good, I, I might record it. Or I'll just clip it and put it on my Twitter. I mean, obviously, you should know what my Twitter is by now. It's going to be reviewed. So, we'll just keep it going. Budget season is very exciting. Thursday, the Thursday night, will definitely be a recording on it because Josh Spain will be putting out a proposal of how to fund DPW a little bit better. And I cannot wait for the reaction of all the city counselors and Director Herbie of not wanting to take more money for DPW. So, until next time.